The Honolulu City Council's District 5 seat covers a wide range of neighborhoods, each with its own identity, from high-rises in newly-developed Kakaako to historic homes in Manoa and St. Louis Heights. Small businesses dot Kamukii and Moiliili, while the world's largest open-air shopping center encompasses Alamoana. Candidates will be vying for the votes of a diverse group of constituents. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Election 2020 on Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Daryl Huff. New faces, new voices, new opinions. Five out of nine seats on the Honolulu City Council are up for grabs this year. District 5 covers Kamukii, Palolo Valley, St. Louis Heights, Manoa, Moiliili, Makali, and portions of Alamoana, Kakaako, and Makiki. Longtime City Councilmember Ann Kobayashi cannot run again due to term limits. Three candidates are facing off in the primary election to replace her. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at pbsy.org and the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Now to our candidates. State Representative Calvin Sei was first elected at the State House of Representatives in 1976. Mr. Sei was the first Chinese-American to serve as Speaker of the House, is a graduate of St. Louis High School and the University of Hawaii at Manoa. Philman Lee is an attorney and a civil rights advocate. He's worked for elected officials in both the Honolulu City Council and the state legislature, and has served on the Manoa Neighborhood Board. Lee was born and raised in Honolulu. And Dave Watase is a Palolo resident and community activist. He organized the Stop Alaway Project movement, demanding another look at the $345 million Alaway flood risk management project. Watase grew up in the St. Louis-Kamukii area and is also a St. Louis High School graduate. And let me start with you, Dave Watase. You haven't run for office before. You're the only one of the three who hasn't run. What prompted you to run? Was it that Alaway project? And what was it that happened there that inspired you to run for office?
Well, it was going to the neighborhood boards and basically working with the community, going hand-house-to-house, and finding out what the issues were. And what I noticed was there was a lack of transparency and accountability with our government leaders. And it started with the Alaway Canal project, and I basically went out there to do my best and fight my hardest. In the course of doing that, I realized that there are a lot of other issues facing the community, which prompted me to get involved in those issues. And as I did that, people actually came up to me, and they were concerned that, you know, Ann Kobayashi was turning out and retiring, and they basically asked me to run for her seat. So after a lot of, you know, thought, whether or not I really wanted to do it and take on the challenge, I decided to do it, yeah.
Phil Lee, you've been involved in politics as a staff and so on, and you've run before. What is it about your background you think would make you the right person to be councilman from this district?
Well, you know, I was served as a deputy corporation council for Mayor Fossey, and I was attorney for the police department, police commission, DPP, Parks and Recs, Transportation Services, et cetera. So I have a very in-depth knowledge of the workings of the city. And also, I was a chief of staff for a city council member, and we worked very hard, and we read every single bill. We attended almost every single committee hearing, as well as council hearings, even the ones that we were not assigned to. And that's like, that's just like really crazy. But we worked very hard and dedicated, and so now I have a very good idea of every single issue before the city, and I have a very good idea, understanding of what it takes to be a city council member. Thank you.
Calvin Sei, you spent a lot of time in the legislature. I've covered you for many years. Why did you decide to jump to the council? Some people would consider it a step down.
No, I looked at it as a step up because I'm really, really interested in public service. Throughout my career, I've always supported the residents who have called and following up with their particular concerns. But more importantly, like I was sharing with you and others, that the fact of the matter, when you attend three neighborhood boards, a lot of the issues are local issues, local politics issues. And that's where, you know, the water main break, the sewer lines, potholes, all of this, it's surprising that a state representative would get the calls rather than our, you know, councilperson. But what I also do is, the fact of the matter, is that with these concerns and problems that are conveyed to me, I do send it to the councilperson who is representing council District 5.
You know, a lot of surveys show that people have a very low level of respect right now for elected officials in general, and that people want change. Phil Lee, a lot of time spent in government, what do you think has to change that will make people feel like they're being better represented?
Well, I think, you know, we have to make the system more user-friendly to the public. The neighborhood board is one way to go, but generally speaking, the elected officials need to be more responsive to the needs of the community that elected them. And oftentimes, there'd be a massive turnout at a hearing or something, and they would kind of vote the other way, like they didn't really feel like they were being listened to.
I should say, you do have a little case of hiccups.
Yes, I do.
This is not a speech impediment at all, but...
No, 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 I just had the hiccups. That's why I was drinking water, sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry. Dave Watase, what do you think? You mentioned transparency, but be a little more specific about that. What do they do wrong? What do they not do?
Well, I think there's a disconnect between the residents and our government. A classic example was at the Manoa Neighborhood Board last night. DLNR was talking about the improvements that they're doing to the trail, and their presentation earlier in the year basically said that they were going to work on the trail.
Which trail are we talking about?
The Manoa Trail to Manoa Falls. And what happened was, their report basically said, you know, "We added in rock fall mitigation." And it was just something that blindsided everybody. And they were saying, "Well, you know, we're almost done, but we have the expert here to talk about what we already did." And that seems to be a common thing that happens. Same thing just like the Magic Island parking lot improvement. You know, they went out there and they removed 26 monkey paw trees, you know, and that caught everybody again by surprise. And it doesn't, it's not too hard to really consult with the neighborhood boards, the community stakeholders, you know, and work with them before you go in there and destroy things. Because once you destroy it, like Sherwood Forest, you know, you can't repair it. You can't put something that you already killed, and you can't put it back. Those trees were over 50 years old.
Calvin, Calvin Sei, after being in government for so long, when I wrote, I read, 1976, I think that was the year after I graduated from high school, how do you convince people that you are an agent of change at this stage in your career after so long in government?
I'm an agent of change primarily because I know what we can do as applying the state finances with county finances. We're all in the same boat, no matter what. And the reason why I say we're all in the same boat, we're all part of the state of Hawaii. And that's where I would say to you, being the chair of the Finance Committee for six years, and then Speaker of the House for 14 years, it has really, really helped me in determining how we can best help the people of the state of Hawaii and the county of Oahu. On a civil beat question, I can share this with you. One of our constituents called me or emailed me the fact that, "I don't want you to do any more fines increases, but did you know that a lot of our fines today at the traffic cart level goes to where? The state of Hawaii." That's what I was telling her. Can we take a portion of that with a resolution to the state legislature to say, can we use some of these funds that are going to the state on behalf of our law enforcement, who the county of Oahu is not getting anything? And that's the kind of application I would like to do. Other applications is in the area of, can we not duplicate services at the state and county level, anticipating that we'll be having a major, major shortage in revenues?
Let me take us through some of the big issues, because one of the things about this particular district is that you have, you have basically almost all the biggest problems of Oahu all jammed into your district in one form or another. You've got incredible development pressures in Kakaako and so on, and you've also got incredibly mature housing up in Manoa. You've got monster homes. You've got climate change issues and so on. So, you know, right now, the big crisis is COVID. You guys will come into office in the middle of a recession, you know, a deep recession. Representatives say, what do you think is the first thing the council should do and the city should do to get us, help us get out of this crisis?
First and foremost, this is what I would do if elected to the city council. I would like to have a committee of the whole get together and then come up with a philosophy of what our goals and objectives are. What is our cause that we are here today for, the nine members of the council? And using the philosophy and values of aloha, working together, rather than having our particular members of the council being fragmented with different factions. Because when you have different factions, you will not be working for the greater good of our county of Oahu. That's one. Secondly, then, I would ask that we have a press, a pause button. Educate ourselves on what county finances are all about. What are the projects that are in the pipeline right now for today? And can we afford it? Let's have this open discussion of what Mr. Watase is saying, transparency.
It sounds like what you're saying is that you're going to have to cut the budget right away, and you have to figure out how to do that.
We have no choice. When 2019, we had 10 million visitors, and this year, we may have...
Three or four billion, probably, maybe.
Okay. That is a 20, that's an 80% cut of revenues that we got in 2019. How do we make that all up? I really don't know, but that's a discussion we need to have. One of my other major concerns, and I think it's a concern for all of us, when it comes July 31st, when the moratorium on evictions takes place, where are these hard-working young men and women who were laid off going to be going? I don't want to see them on the streets. And that's the kind of discussion we need as a committee of the whole.
Dave Watase, what do you think is the first thing the council needs to do when you guys reconvene?
Well, I think COVID-19, you know, is responsible for a lot of high unemployment. I think the impacts to small businesses, you know, retail and the service industry is of great importance to me, and also the tourist industry. You know, those are, it's our economic engine. But it's not going to be a quick recovery. I think it may take years. Of course, the state, because their revenue is based on income taxes, probably will be the hardest hit versus the city is based on property assessment taxes. So that may take a while to drop, and we still need to see how that pans out. But I think the city's already looking at $130 million shortfall, and really, our budget has been increasing over 5% every year. You know, that's not going to happen anymore, you know? And what we really need to do is focus on the essential services in government and looking at helping those who are unemployed and those who are truly impacted by the COVID virus. You know, really getting to those people, and like I think what Calvin reiterated too is, is those who are renting homes or have to pay their mortgage, you know, the foreclosures or the evictions, you know, making sure that those people don't end up on the street.
Phil, does this sound like much fun to you?
Yes. You know, I think, I agree with Speaker Meritise Sei that we should have a committee of the whole to come together and address the issues. But I would also would like to see a trifecta where you have the feds, state, and county working together, because, you know, the CDC and the Department of Health have most of these health issues and the expertise. The city, we're at local issues, we don't have a health department, so to speak. But we do, but what we do have is the mayor, who is making a lot of the decisions to, that is being, of course, ratified by the governor, but is coming out with all these decrees to how to reduce COVID from spreading. So that's very important for the council to work together with the mayor and to ensure that the safeguards are in place. We do need to open up the economy because we need to have people get back to work, you know, people are suffering now. However, we have to take the proper safeguards so we don't, the infection rate doesn't go up.
Let me ask you, and how do you, how would you balance that, opening up the economy versus safety? I know the Civil Beat Hawaii News Now poll asked people, where would you stand if you had to choose between opening up the economy even though more people get sick, or two, being just very careful about the disease, but then, you know, at the cost of jobs? So where would you stand on that continuum?
I actually prefer to err on the side of safety and health for our citizens and to protect them from the influx of outside influences coming here. But on the other hand, I would like to see more safeguards so that we can revive some tourist industry, like pre-testing before they come here. They can be in a quarantine before they come here, or post after they get here, as well as on-the-spot airport testing with a thermometer for fever.
Let me, Dave Watase, how do you feel about the course of this? Do you feel like the economy is opening about the right pace too quickly, or do you think it should have been opened up earlier?
Well, I'm happy with the pace that we're going. I think safety is always a concern. We do need to kick-start our economy. I think it starts with using, you know, the federal money that we've received and making sure that we circulate it among our local economy by Hawaii. You know, that was a phrase that I think was used, you know, a long time ago when I was little, you know? And by circulating and buying local products, even local residents, doing kamaina rates at the local hotels, you know, we can circulate that money, you know, many times before it leaves the island. And I think that would be one way that hopefully will carry us through until maybe a vaccine comes out or becomes safer, or governor decides. I know they were talking about some kind of bubble economies where the rates are similar to ours.
Let me ask you, how much risk are you comfortable with? If it meant we had 30, 40, 50 cases a day instead of the maybe 20?
Yeah, you know, Lieutenant Governor Green basically was at Manoa Neighborhood Board last night, and he spoke, you know, for quite a while...
That's what he does.
...in high detail about that. And he said basically, as they open up, it's not like they're just going to rush through it, but that if, if, like the second wave, or it started turning in the wrong direction, all they do is crank it back to where it was before, and of course, track, trace, and try to isolate wherever you have a hotspot, you know? So I'm comfortable with what our state is doing. I think we do need to open up. I mean, otherwise, we're really choking ourselves, you know?
Let me give Speaker Sei, former Speaker Sei, an opportunity. Have you been satisfied with the way it's been managed, you know, both at the state and city level?
Well, let me say this. It was really thought out, and the reason why it was really thought out, that they started very slowly in the testing, was because they recognized that we did not have enough medical beds. That's number one. Number two, we did not have enough medical equipment, and that's why they went very slow. I thought, you know, as an example for me, I would have asked the governor, can you do a 10% testing of 1.4 million local residents?
Like random testing?
Yep. And just have that, because that becomes your baseline of the 10% of the population. Today, it's only about, what, 5% to 6%?
It's 1,000 a day.
Okay.
You know, so...
But what I'm getting at is this, okay? And secondly, I tend to agree with both Phil and Dave that the approach they took was the best approach, because in essence, I always felt like this, what is more important? Your health or money at the end of the day? With all the money that you have, if you have a sickness or a disease, and the money can't buy you the cure, what's the money for? Right? So that's where I looked at it from that point of view. But we are going in a very methodical, practical approach in trying to address COVID-19, and more importantly, yes, they are trying their very best.
Let me...
If there's one thing, Daryl, I'd like to say this, is that I did make a request to the tourist industry, if the hotels, every hotel would have an urgent care facility manned by two or three individuals, and have the testing there at their respective properties as an amenity in attracting...
For their guests?
Guests and for employees.
For their employees. Let me ask this, getting back to the impact on the city. Assuming, and Dave is correct, it's not going to be overnight, this, this cut in the budget, because you've already got the property tax rate set for this year. People will, who don't get foreclosed on, will pay their property taxes, but next year's, next year's budget is probably going to require some pretty major cutbacks, because we're starting to see falling real estate values. So if you had to choose between, say, an across-the-board reduction of pay for city workers, or take, defund certain departments, they've talked about defunding the police, which would you choose? An across-the-board cut, or would you, are there certain places you think you could cut back significantly, save, save that money?
Well, I, you know, I think we have to look at both. It might be necessary to have a, across-the-board, but we also want to make our government more efficient and effective, meaning we have to, like Speaker Meritise Sei said, look at the inefficiencies and the duplication of services, not within, just within the city, but between the city and the state. Make sure that, like, both have this Section 8 housing, and maybe it can, things can be combined so that we only have one person doing it, so it's more efficient, and we don't have duplication. So we should be taking a very close look at what, where we can cut inefficiency, but we might also need an across-the-board cut.
Okay, so your answer is both. Dave, what do you think?
Well, I'm against an across-the-board cut. I think our city employees are valuable. They're valuable resources for our city to operate, and we already have a hotel industry infrastructure that can expand as soon as it's safe, you know? And as we expand, those services are again going to be needed. And if we lose our valuable resources that we have in our, and it costs a lot of money to train people, you know, and we always have shortages. So I think we need to hold on to them as long as we can. I think where we need to cut is on the unneeded services, the unneeded projects, and there's just a bunch of them. I'd like to see us, you know, hire consultants that are local instead of going to the mainland, you know, and really look at what's important to our residents and meet those needs first. You know, we don't need to expand anything at this point. I think we really, really need to just put everything on pause. The biggest cost and unknown to me is going to be the rail.
Yeah. I want to get to that very shortly. So Calvin, real quickly, how do you feel about what can be cut?
Well, first and foremost, on a very practical matter, this is what I would do if elected to the city council. Look at your city charter. What are the programs that are part of the city charter? That's number one. Number two, what are duplicative with state? That's number two. And number three, go back 10 years to find out what new programs the council have enacted that we can look at cutting. Because if you look at that, you're going back to core services, essential services.
Okay, so...
And that's the approach I would look at.
Three questions, three questions on rail, right off the bat. What are you going to do about the rail? How will you stop the bleeding? What are the candidates' view on rail? How do each of the candidates, if, so, let me start with you, Representative Sei, because you were actually part of the process of funding the rail through the state's excise tax and sharing it with the county. What is your, just to sum up the situation right now with rail, they're waiting for bids from a consortium of companies that would basically build the last four miles, I believe it's four miles, and then, and then operate the system for 30 years. They want to have sort of like a super bid, P3, they call it. That's not going to happen until August. Do you think that that is really a realistic thing? And if it doesn't come through, what's your plan B for rail if you don't get that successful bidder?
I've said to a lot of residents, the plan B would probably be you press the pause button. You look at your financial plan as far as what you have to afford and what you cannot afford, and that's where having the committee of the whole, you have to discuss with every of the nine members, what are your pet projects that you would like to see be taken out, et cetera? But at the end of the day, what is the number one CIP project?
What does hit the pause button mean when it comes to rail, though?
The pause button means, I'm saying that, Phil, Dave, and Daryl, let's see what we have out there. The five of us, the new five of us in the council. What is out there as far as the projects? What is our commitment? And do we have to meet these commitments? Or can we renegotiate it? That's number one. Number two, what is our finances if we're bleeding so badly? The rail is financed by the general excise tax and the TAT.
Hotel tax, yeah.
Yes, the transit accommodation tax. And it is run by the state now with that Senate bill won during the special session, if you folks recall.
Overseeing, yeah.
Right. With Department of Budget and Finance, the Department of County General Services, that they go and thoroughly look at all of these invoices before it is transferred on to Budget and Finance, where they cut the check.
But let me understand, when you say pause, do you mean stop building the rail while you organize, reorganize all this, or you mean...
No, we're not stopping it. We're just looking at what are the priorities of the nine council members.
So you might actually shift borrowing that might go on for other projects to the rail if necessary?
To continue on to meet that deadline.
Dave, what do you, what do you think? What would your, your plan B, assuming that they don't get this wonderful, perfect bid that comes in right under, under budget?
Yeah, well, I mean, I have concerns. I don't think they're, they will probably get that perfect bid. I think it's been a mess from the very beginning. When they did the draft EIS before we voted on it, the rail was supposed to go from University of Hawaii to West Kapolei, you know? And it was for half the cost. The federal government was actually contributing more than we were supposed to contribute. By the time they started, it doubled in price and it was shortened. You know, it didn't go to the main areas. It bypasses our densely populated areas. It doesn't go to Waikiki. It doesn't go to University of Hawaii, you know? So I think there's issues as far as who's going to benefit from it and the true ridership. You know, it doesn't go to east Oahu. It doesn't go to the windward side. It doesn't even go to central Oahu. So I have great concerns, and especially with COVID, you know, the G E T and the TAT, that money is not going to be there, you know? Can we even afford to pay for a $9 billion project? So I do agree, I think we need to put it on pause. I think we need to do a forensic audit and find out what happened. You know, they can't account for over $700 million, and that's not pocket change, you know? So there are concerns. And if you Google Honolulu Rail and you look at all the news articles, there's no good news. You can go back from the beginning, there's absolutely no good news.
Let me just stop you there, David. So, but, I mean, right, all, all true, right? $700 million is less than 10% of the project, right? I mean, there's, 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 there's money there. What would you actually do? Would you change the project? Finish the project?
I think we may have to pause it at a certain location, and then really redefine the project with parameters that we know we can finish it on time and on cost. It's like anything else. If anybody was renovating your kitchen and you did it like the rail, you know, and it was like an unknown thing, I mean, it...
But you're not going to, you're not going to give up your stove, right? You still want to finish the kitchen, so I'm just...
Exactly. I mean, we can't abandon it. I think we've put too much into it. You know, there's other ideas maybe, and, and we don't know. Let's say it increases another $5 billion. I mean, we're talking about reducing traffic, right? We could spend a billion dollars and put up, you know, 10,000 dormitories at University of Hawaii, you know, and that would be an alternate solution. You know, we could use the rail. Kehe area has a transfer station. You know, maybe we can use the rail in the evening hours to haul trash to the H power plant. I don't know.
That's creative.
Fine uses to maximize what we've already invested into the infrastructure on rail.
Okay, Phil, you're feeling. Assuming this bid doesn't come in and save the day, where do you think are the choices?
Well, I'm more optimistic, you know, about the, I'm hoping that that will come because from the very beginning, I was in support of PPPs, public partnerships, private partnerships, and that, I feel is the way to go, because it would relieve the taxpayers of a lot of burden. I think, you know, one thing that we have to do is increase accountability, and I would like to see more responsibility placed under the mayor and the city council to oversee this thing. Right now, they have some appointees on Hart that are insulated from the public. They're not accountable to anybody, so the causes are running away. I think we should perhaps repeal the Hart law... I think we should perhaps repeal the Hart law and disband it, place the responsibility directly on the mayor with the oversight of the city council as well.
Let me ask, would you be willing to spend even more than $10 million if that's what it took to finish it? $10 billion, I should say.
I, well, I would, I would, it would be, it would be best, of course, to try to finish it all the way to Alamoana, but I think, I have some reservations about if the cost goes up too, we may have to like we say, put it, put it on hold or pause and try to take another look at it and perhaps, you know, shorten it or get more money.
Okay, let me move on. One of the other big issues that we hear a lot about is, is people are actually kind of enjoying the lack of tourists. I mean, 10, 10 million tourists is, was a lot of tourists. Do you folks all agree that 10 million was too many people? I'll start with you, Dave.
Well, excuse me. I, I think our infrastructure is near capacity. When I look at all the development, whether it be a hotel or the condominiums that we're putting up, we're basically meeting the demands of our water, sewer, electricity through our, through the residents' efforts through conservation. Those conservation efforts are not really making it sustainable for the future generation and our children. What, what's happening is as, as we save and reduce our water consumption, when we convert to LED light bulbs and our, we use less power or go solar, that energy is then being turned around and sold to market condo units. For me, I'd like that infrastructure and our resources to be saved for our children and, and rather, I'm not against building, I'm against what we're building and who it's for. I think we need to provide for our children and the next generation. So if, if there's water in our aquifer available, we need to really target it, you know, to affordable units.
Let me, let me get back to my original question though. I mean, you feel like that 10 million tourists is too many tourists?
Yeah, I mean, the traffic going around the island, our hiking trails and our beaches are, are a lot. And in fact, I was talking, when I was going house to house, I was talking to the resident and they're retired and their income is fine and they're actually loving it.
Yeah, without the tourists. I would say, you know, for many years, legislature funded, I want to say HVCB, but HTA and various tourist agencies to market Hawaii vigorously. Do you feel it needs to be dialed back? And, and how could you dial it back if you wanted to have fewer tourists come that maybe we're spending a little bit more money?
It's, it's a very interesting question to pose to me because the state of Hawaii is just hungry for money. That's new income coming into the state of Hawaii, new cash coming into the state of Hawaii to balance off what we're exporting as far as buying oil and other products. So if 10 million is the max, it's something to consider, but then you have to look at it from a point of view that is there room for the neighbor islands?
You mean shift, shift, shift some of those?
Shift the population of the visitors to the neighbor islands. But I would say that Hawaii Tourism Authority has done a fantastic job in taking care of the concerns of the residents of Hawaii because you have all these different committees and grants for different proposals from the culture to the Hawaiian, Hawaiian, what you call that, program where they teach the employees about Hawaiian culture as far as sharing with the visitors. All of this, they're trying their best. But the question would be posed, I would say, to the Hawaii Tourism Authority. And for me, in the, in the 1980s, the maximum we thought as far as visitors was 7 million. So we're over 3 million. And are we suffering? I would say for the public, the general public at large, Darryl, we are suffering because I'm so happy to be able to see the kids and the families strolling down Kalakaua Avenue on a Sunday morning, you know? That's the kind of stuff that has to happen. I'm so happy that I don't see anybody next to me at Waikiki Beach or at Kohi.
But I just heard you say that we need, we need, we need that number of tourists to survive though.
That's, that's the decision the city council would have to make also with the Hawaii Tourism Authority and the Department of Economic Development. What is the priority of what we want to see as far as?
But you don't, you don't sound like you've got that answer in your head yet.
No.
Okay, Phil, what do you think? What, what, what's your thoughts about the size and the manageability of the tourism industry?
Well, I definitely think that we should manage the size better and perhaps reduce because we can't really keep on doing it and also be able to protect our citizens from, you know, COVID. So we, we need to try to diversify our economy, do search for other sources of income such as diverse agriculture and high-tech industries like IT or programmings where they can use educated engineers and people that can get a good pay. But I think we do have to kind of cut back because at the pace of 10,000, 10 million, it's going to be putting our residents in danger.
You know, I've got a question here that I, I, I would enjoy reading because this is going to be a pretty dramatic year politically for the city. You're going to have a, a brand new mayor, you're going to have a majority of new council members, and so it's kind of a blank slate in a way. This, this caller asks, as a newly elected official, who would you want to work with as mayor and why? And I'm assuming out of the existing candidates. Dave, you want to take the first shot at that, of the, of the candidates for mayor? Which one do you think you'd prefer to work with?
I, I think I can work with all of them. I think the role of the city council is really to be the check, to make sure that the mayor stays in line with the concerns of the residents. You know, my concern is, you know, if there, our next mayor is, you know, I mean, a lot of it is if, if you follow the money, you know, sometimes they get influenced by, you know, wanting to go in a direction that is not necessarily in line with the community or the residents. So that's, that's my main concern that, you know, we have somebody that really is looking out for the residents and putting them first.
You know, for a guy who's never run for office, that was a pretty political answer. I mean, it's clever. Calvin, would you actually venture a name of preference?
I would say, can I mention three names? I would say maybe Colleen, that's one. I've worked with her very well.
Anabusa.
President, yes. Rick Blangierati is another one from a business perspective. And third, probably Keith.
Alamea.
Yes.
Okay, Phil, you want to take a shot at that?
Well, in a way, I kind of, I, I really don't want to mention any names because we have to work with whoever wins later, so I don't want to be taking sides until the primary. But I do agree to a certain extent with Speaker Marissa Say that those are, you know, some of the top leaders.
Okay, so back to rail really quickly, as I want to get to, starting to get some questions in here, I want to honor our, our viewers who call in. Would the candidates consider dropping the federal aid and change the plan for rail to run at ground level for the last segment? Phil, you want to, you, you think that that might be a, a plan B?
Well, I think that would be difficult to make changes at, at this point. Any kind of change now would going to be a monumental change in engineering and cost. And that, that is one of the reasons why we have so many cost overruns is changing the plan. We have to have a vision of what we want to see done and stick to that vision. If we keep changing, overrun's going to kill us.
Dave, with us, you had a lot of criticism of, of the rail. Would, would that be something you think should be considered?
I mean, it's an option, so of course it has to be considered. It's just like the Alamoana Canal project, you know? The Army Corps wanted to go a certain direction and the community felt that wasn't the right direction. So if the community looks at it, if there's more transparency, it's, it should be clear to everybody what the decision's going to be, you know, if, if we forfeit what the federal government is putting out. Because if, if the rail doubles in price again, what the federal government is giving us is chump change, you know? And like I mentioned before, there's other options to reduce traffic. COVID in itself basically emptied, you know, our freeways, right? And people are learning to adapt and work from home, okay? We can focus again on developing Kapolei and housing projects that are closer to the work area as well as housing, for example, at the University of Hawaii. We all know that when UH is not in session, Middle Street is clear, you know? And, and I think those are win-win and options that we can look at.
Calvin, Calvin Say, any thoughts about actually changing the, the structure of the project?
I, I'm happy this question is being posed because at this point in time, my response would be very simply put, this, but this is kind of issues that the present council and past council should have been addressing as far as the options, you know? They knew the cost overruns were occurring, but at the end of the day, for me, Darryl, I'll defer to the experts who are the engineers and the planners who are doing it at this point in time. If you're going to change whatever is, is happening now as far as what the plans are, yeah, it is going to add more cost to the changes that occur. But in the end, also I share with all of you is the fact of the matter that our city council in the 60s and 70s had that vision of the second city of Kapolei. Now it's going to be Koah Ridge, now it's going to be Ho'opili. And the state of Hawaii is not helping. You only got H2 going out there, right? So that's the problem that we're going to be facing. And like I said to another forum that all three of us were at, it's a fact of the matter, I was selfish. Calvin Say was selfish. I wanted to preserve East Honolulu in its pristine, really old style quality living.
They got pretty bad traffic there now.
In East Honolulu, you're correct. And the reason why is because the increased density of East Honolulu. I was put, I wanted to push it out to the west and that's where they were going with the second city of Kapolei. And now with the Ho'opili up at Koah Ridge.
And rail was always part of that equation, right?
Right. It was part of the equation if the residents understand that. It goes back to the days of Frank Fosse. I still have that picture of Josuke and Mamori Yamazaki with their model rail called the Tsukiyama train. Josuke and Yam, Mamori Yamazaki were the two money chairs.
I think I was there too. So anyway, you're dating me. You folks have got Kakahako in your, in your parts of Kakahako in your district. It's turning into a high-rise thing. There's a proposal right now to give Alamoana some breaks so they could put like four high-rises on the parking deck at Alamoana. How do you guys feel about that? Dave, I'll let you start. How do you feel about that kind of high-rise development going up in an area that's already got an awful lot of density?
Well, I think if we're going to go high-rise, it should stay in the urban corridor. I'm not against building, but I think you're talking about the Alamoana Plaza. My concern is 80% of that is market, only 20% is affordable. That 80% is using 80% of our natural resources, which may not necessarily be bought or used by our children and the next generation. Those resources, I think, should be targeted for our kids.
So let me, let me get straight with what you're saying though, just so I get this. So, so it's, it's been the very common pattern that when someone builds a big development, they're required to provide X amount of the, of proportion to affordable housing. Are you saying that either the, the formula is wrong or that we should just be building affordable housing instead of high-rise market?
I, I'd like to see more truly affordable units. Some of these units, not all, because there's several developments with thousands of units being proposed or being built now in that area. And Alamoana Shopping Center, to me, is not really the area to put affordable housing. I, I think that's premium lots, the amenities in that building are really designed for the rich and the luxury, okay? If you're looking at affordable, you don't need the amenities. We can go further back, closer into Mo'ili'i and Makali, where, where the per square foot land cost is less. An example is a, a project called Halei. I mean, it's elderly housing next to Stadium Park. It's designed for 55 plus and it's, and it's targeting the 30, 50, and 60% of the median income. I think that's the kind of development we need to build.
I just want to get, understand, because Dave, you do have a development background and I want, I want to understand what you're saying and then I'll chat with the other guys here about this. Are you saying that we should just not build the luxury and then focus on the affordable? Because you're saying that building the luxury sucks off resources. It does suck the construction industry off. It, you know, we've only got a limited amount of resources. Is that what you're saying? It's like?
Well, we're granting, for example, like the, you know, Alamoana Plaza, I think right now on that property, they can only go 100 feet and we're giving them a 300-foot basically exemption, you know, for 20%, you know, affordable, affordable units. You know, I, I don't think that's a good trade, you know? And I think we can do better by focusing further back and providing other incentives to property owners that maybe don't expect that kind of high return.
And do you feel that that will take the construction industry off the focus of luxury housing and put it onto affordable housing? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I mean, right now, we, even our construction industry, we have limited resources.
Okay, good. I would stop you because we've talked a long time about that with you. I want to share. Phil, what are your feeling about that? This whole balance between these luxury construction versus affordable construction?
Well, you know, those incentives to, to, by giving them extra height and trade off for building affordable housing, it should, it should be more fair. And I think maybe like it is, it is better to do affordable housing further back in because that's, that's prime like land right on the.
I want to say, fair, fair to who?
Well, well, here's the thing.
Fair to one guy is not fair to another guy, yeah.
I think what should they should do is like if they do allow them to forego some of these affordable housings, like they should recoup it by asking them to pay impact fees that will be used for building affordable housing on another site, which is not as prime land further in, like Dave said, further in it's.
So you say that money would go to government, so the government would build the affordable housing or partnerships?
Yes.
But the government?
Yeah, that's, I think is we handle.
And then Calvin Say, what are, what are your thoughts about that? I mean, this, this balance and also the question of how do you generate affordable housing inventory?
Well, first and foremost, I would recommend that we look at some of the successful workforce housing, affordable housing, low-income housing developers. A case in point is the Honolulu Advertiser Towers. That was financed privately.
It went south.
Right. And that's, that's just one, but more importantly, I was very disappointed when I went to the Alamoana Kakahako Neighborhood Board, when they made a presentation in regards to that project on the Alamoana Shopping Center property. I would have questioned myself if I was a council person, how did we all agree to, to change the alignment?
Of the rail?
Yeah. There was an alignment already to Alamoana and now this alignment that they're requesting is for the, the area that we're going up to university. We had an alignment that was going to go to the university in return for original point. So they accommodated those developers, the council. And that's where I get very disappointed.
Let me just, just to sum up what you're saying, because I'm familiar with this story. The council, the mayor said, don't build that particular high-rise there or build it differently so that we can maintain a rail corridor that's going to make a left turn and go up to Manoa and, but the council overrode what the mayor wanted to do and allowed that construction, which essentially forced a realignment of the rail in order to go to Manoa, right? So you're saying the council should not have done that?
And that's where they're requesting that if you're going to do that alignment through this project, 400 feet. And, you know, don't put the noose around my neck. I don't know this developer, but my point of the matter is that we're giving up something in return for what? The, the new alignment?
Something that they, they are, they gave up already.
Right.
So they're essentially giving away something that they already had and then giving away some more to get it back.
And then finally, for the past, not, not, not maybe seven years ago prior when I was Speaker of the House, we had bills. We had bills asking that the developer set aside 30%. It died in the other chamber.
Okay, so I've got a couple more questions that are interesting. One, one, someone is chastising you, Representative Say, no, don't shift the tourists to the outer islands. Maui is overrun by tourists, limit rental cars, limit rental cars, rooms, et cetera. And here's another one that says, do you support stopping additional funding for new hotels? One option is to maintain and redo current accommodations. And another one's saying, you know, we clearly have an economy based too much on tourism. We're getting back to these questions about what we do to manage and control tourism. Phil Lee, do you like these specific ideas? Phil Lee, do you like the specific ideas of, um, you know, blocking construction of new hotels, um, reducing the amount of rental cars, rooms, et cetera, like literally reducing the amount of resources available to tourists in order to reduce the number of tourists?
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure what, I mean, they should, the limit, the city might be able to do some limits, but I think the market will drive the forces because with a tremendous drop in tourism, the demand for new hotels will also drop. And so it, it makes sense to just refurbish what we do have to make them more nice. But, um, I, I think that the market will, will drive some of these, will drive some of these forces. And I guess, you know, there'll be less need for cars in the outer islands and things like that, so I think it will naturally take.
But how, how will the market change?
Well, because, well, because if we have, you know, a lot, a lot less tourists, they, they won't need more hotel, new hotels. I mean, they barely have enough to fill the ones they have now.
I think the question is how do you reduce the number of tourists? Because the market just will keep sending you tourists unless you do something to ratchet it back.
Oh, well, I, I, well, um, I think, you know, that the safeguards that we put in to protect our citizens will, will reduce some of that tourism here.
Okay, I'm going to change the subject again because I wanted to get to this really fast. We've only got about three, four minutes left. Climate change was a big issue, Dave, in the, the presentation of the Alaway watershed. You had, you guys had a big fight about that. But climate change is going to affect the whole island. You guys have to make votes on the entire island. One of the big issues is sea level rise. What do you think, and I'll start with you, Representative Say. Uh, what do you think needs to be done about the coastal communities that are exposed and threatened by sea level rise as the city and county of Honolulu?
Maybe one of the things that we should be considering and having it vetted is the setbacks from the ocean. Any future developments close to the ocean, instead of 100-foot setback, maybe 1,000-foot. And you're, and you're protecting the private landowner in the long term.
And what about the, the, the stuff that's already there and it might be taken or damaged?
Well, I don't believe we can stop Mother Nature or, or else you look at what happened to Venice.
Do you compensate those people if they lose their property?
I wouldn't.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I don't think you can compensate people for loss based on climate change. I mean, people, when they bought property along the shoreline, uh, they know there's inherent risk of climate change, tsunamis, hurricanes, you name it. You know, but it's going to be island-wide, statewide, shore, everywhere on the shoreline, our harbors are going to, are going to be impacted. So it's really to be determined, you know, how we're going to, uh, adjust to this. You know, I do think the city can take a leadership role and when they do projects, uh, take climate change into consideration and be, and lead by example, you know, rather than just force private developers and private owners to, uh, you know, build things, taking climate change into consideration.
Phil Lee, what do you think about that?
I, I think we have to take a more strategic look at this because we need to at the first, change our policies so that we can eliminate some of the adverse effects of climate change, such as, uh, working towards renewable energy and getting away from burning carbon dioxide that burns holes in the atmosphere. We need to try to work towards converting cars and things that, that will damage in our atmosphere and work towards slowing down the climate change.
Well, just specifically though, do you think, I mean, the city and county zone places so people could put houses on the shoreline. Do you feel like if those houses are now threatened, that it's just let the, let the, let the ocean take them?
Yeah, I don't think we should be encouraging more housing in the, the low-lying zones that are going to be gone in a, shortly. And even we have the, I'm concerned about the rail. You know, if the rail stations are in some areas where it's going to be flooded, I have some concerns about that, which may have to rethink that as well.
Darryl, can I just say this? Climate change will be occurring and we're not addressing anything. A case in point, are we addressing our harbors and our airports? I, I leave it like that.
That is, we're, we're just leaving big assets on the shoreline without doing anything?
Absolutely, that we need so, so, so much as valuable resources for our air, airport, for our harbors. Let's, you know, let's talk about it more. What are we afraid of? Because it is coming.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Calvin Say, Dave Wataisi and Philman Lee. Uh, mahalo to all of you for joining us tonight and we thank our guests, uh, like I just did. And next week on Insights, a doubleheader. In our first half hour, the Democratic candidates for State House District 13, representing Northeast Maui, Lenai, Molokai and Koholavi, incumbent Linda Coit will face off with her opponent, native Hawaiian activist Walter Ritty. Then from 8:30 to 9:00, State Senate District 13, which includes Nuuanu, Punchbowl and Chinatown on Oahu, Carl Rhodes will try to keep his seat against business owner Kevin McDonald. Please join us then. I'm Darryl Huff for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Aloha.